Well, welcome, everybody. We're here for Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It's Tuesday, April 30th, the last day of April 2019. We're at Shemecata Community College. And it's 4,000 Lancaster Drive Northeast, building number two, room 179 in Salem, Oregon, for the record. And thanks for joining us tonight. It is a tradition that we always start our board meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you would stand and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, it's so good to have a great crowd tonight. I feel like we're playing baseball or something, you know? It's sunny spring day, the sun's out. We almost, actually, Commissioner needs a sunglasses. Somebody want to volunteer a pair of sunglasses for him?
I'll just squint. Do you remember we were at the...
Thank you, Lieutenant. I know.
I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding. We were at the county fair last summer, and it was not only this bright, but about 100 degrees, so this is a little more pleasant than that.
Yeah. Well, we want to welcome, we do have some people set up, signed up for public comment. I'm going to go a little bit off the agenda, and I want to welcome the President of Community College, Julie Huckstein, is here to just welcome us. And so, Julie, if you want to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just sit down, so it'll make it easier. So, so, welcome, everyone, to Shemecata Community College. And I really want to thank the Commissioners for holding their meeting out here at the Shemecata campus. About six months ago, four to six months ago, we had you out here for a, you had a meeting out here, and then you had a town hall. And I just have to say that it was a very wonderful experience to hear from the community about what they want you to focus on in the northeast area. So, I wanted to say thank you to everyone who's here. Thank you to the Commissioners for reaching out into the community and using Shemecata as the place where you can hear from the public. I can't tell you how much I appreciate that. And we have some of our board members here that are also here to hear from those of you who are in the audience in the presentations today. So, thank you, Commissioner Cameron, Brentano, and Willis.
Well, thank you, Madam President, for opening up your home, our home, I guess.
Yes, it's ours, yes.
And all the work that Shemecata does, not only in Marion County, but through other counties here in the region, and all the workforce and education that you put forth. And I don't know if the citizens know this, but not only, we have a, through our parole and probation, a program here that I think has had like 30 graduating classes.
Oh, I think so, probably by now.
The SOAR, the SOAR program that, if you, if you want to go to something that's really unique, Sheriff Myers is here tonight, and his parole and probation team do that class here, and it's amazing to see that graduation. Maybe there's 10 to 20 people that graduate, that turn their lives around and go back into our community and make a difference. And so, there's things from, from high school students here to adults. So, thank you for all the work you do.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. We have some people signed up for public comment, and I just want to go through just a little bit about how tonight will go. This is our second board session that we've done on the road. We did one up at Gates, out of, yeah, I want to say Mill City, but it was Gates at the fire hall there. And I didn't explain how things will work. I know this, there's two people signing up for public comment. What we're going to do is we're going to go through our board agenda, which is a typical Wednesday morning at nine o'clock. It'll go relatively quick. We have a lot of people, though, tonight to give some presentations in this particular area, so that'll take us a little bit longer to get through. So, the two people that are signed up for public comment, I want to call you up first. If this is something you want to discuss later during our town hall, you can certainly come up during public comment and say, "This is what I would like to speak to. If you could take a couple of minutes and speak to that." And then, if it's something we want to have a deeper discussion about during the town hall, we will make sure we put that on the agenda of the town hall. So, we're going to go through our board session, and this is the typical agenda that we use. It's public comment, then we have presentations, we'll do a consent calendar, and then we'll do, we have only one action item tonight, so it'll fairly go quickly. But first, public comment. The individuals that are signed up, I have, is it Carl Ekstrom? Carl?
Yeah. Are you on dating, you haven't given you a sign-in sheet, you don't get it coming in?
Oh, you thought it was a sign-in sheet?
Yeah.
Well, we got, we got you. Can we get your fingerprints? The sheriff needs those.
You don't have to.
All right. Okay, so, and then Frank Pack? Frank Pack? Would you, would you like to make some comments, Frank? And if you would, if you'd come over and, can you get him on camera there?
Yes, please.
Okay. Welcome.
I don't have a lot to say. I just, I'm the chair of the Northgate Neighborhood Association, and I just wanted to say that we go from Corden Road, Silverton Road, to Cherry Avenue and the Parkway, and Hayesville Drive, and that's our area. So, we provide city of Salem service information for everybody inside that area, whether they're in the city part or the county part.
Agreed.
You're welcome to come to our meeting.
And you want to say when your meetings are, so people...
Third Thursday of the month, at six o'clock, at the Cornerstone Apartments on Portland Road, in the community center. And we usually have somebody from Marion County there, but sometimes, but usually always have city of Salem people and anybody else that signs up to talk. We let them have a say, and we find out about what's going on in the city and, and all that. So, I just want to share that with all the people that might be interested.
Okay, thank you, Frank. And if you want to make sure, I know you put your phone number here. We have a, do we have a sign-up list tonight for the town hall later? Lisa? We'll make sure that we'll have a sign-up list during the town hall, and if you want to sign up, and make sure you get your email, because Jolene is here, she's over here. She's our public information officer, and we have an email list. So, when we have these meetings over here, town halls throughout different areas of the county, East Salem's one of those areas that we've been focusing on, the canyon and North Marion County, we'll make sure we email you and get you the information that what's going on, plus you have a way to get ahold of us and give us information as well. So, thank you very much, Frank, for that announcement. And we're going to go right into our presentations. Our first, looks like she's got, she's got me, number one is going to be East, no. Why did you mark number one? I'm lost here, Brenda.
Those are the PowerPoints.
Oh, those are PowerPoints? Okay. So, you all know that I'm lost unless somebody tells me what to do, right? Okay. Sam, you know that.
I try to help.
All right. Okay, first presentation is the Neighborhood Association, Michael Johnson, East Salem Suburban Neighborhood Association. Michael, if you want to have a seat, and you'll be on camera that direction. I want to thank CCTV, they're here tonight filming this whole thing. They film all our board sessions. You can watch them on YouTube, right? Facebook Live. So, are we on Facebook Live tonight? Well, hi, Facebook. All right. Michael, welcome.
Thank you. It was a shock to get the request. It says I'm the chair. I was the chair. I'm still involved. Thirteen years ago, my wife said, "Oh, East Salem is having a meeting. It's community involvement. You should go get involved." And my schedule at the time, I could only be there about three times out of the year. They met on the first Thursdays. I had other things going on most of the time. So, I went for a few years, and then my schedule changed. And then, in 2008 to 2011, I was there most of the time, and they kept saying, "Well, why don't you come be on the board?" Now, you should know that if you speak out at a neighborhood association meeting, you tend to get invited to be somebody on the board or somebody who gets to do things. And finally, after three or four years, I said, "Okay." And then, a few months later, they said, "Would you be the chair?" One of the things that we're probably known for out in our part of town, at least the last few years, is we put up a streetlight or two. And how that happened is that somebody in the neighborhood, I'm going to turn towards you all, they've seen me a lot. The, a neighbor came and said, "Our street is so dark, we can't see a thing, we can't even see our hand in front of our face, but the people who want to come run through our backyards at all hours of the night, they know where they're going, and we see people there all the time. Can we do something about that?" And I said, "I don't know. We've, I've never been asked before." We contacted the county, and they told us how, and a few, oh, it was more than a few months, but we ended up getting streetlights on two streets. And we said, "Wow." Six months later, somebody else came to us and said, "Can we get streetlights?" Well, by then, we knew how to do it. And then, there was somebody else who said, "Well, here's how you can get streetlights." And then, pretty soon, there was somebody else. And finally, we asked the county, can we get streetlights for everything from Hayesville Drive to almost Highway 22 and from Corden to I-5? Now, albeit it took 18 months to get them to nod their head yes, and there were a lot of hoops to jump through, but what it all started out with was that somebody in the neighborhood asked a question, and that's where everything is. We have a gentleman who lives South Estate Street. Every October, when Halloween would come, they had two feet of water in their front yard. Well, actually, it was in the street, because the drains were plugged up. And it'd been that way for 40 years, and nobody had said anything, until he came and asked us, "Can you do something? Can you help us?" And that's the gist of neighborhoods, and the gist, I would invite you, if you haven't been to one lately, go. If you have nothing to say, listen. And pretty soon, you're going to find out that there are things that need to be done. In our part of town right now, there's 122-acre plot at the corner of State and Corden Road. They want to plant 1,074 front doors. And that's going to mean 10,000 more vehicles on State and Auburn Road, because there is no access onto Corden. And we have to deal with that. And so, right now, we are correlating with Elna, the East Lancaster Neighborhood Association, and the neighbors, and some of you have seen my emails to you, begging you, "Please, come. We are going to talk about traffic, we're going to talk about stormwater management, and all the things that are going to go on in that 122-acre parcel, because it belongs, it literally is in the city, but because we are so zigzaggy with the...
Boundaries.
...boundaries, that we end up visiting city council a lot. We end up visiting city planning meetings a lot. We give testimony a lot. And I got my real comeuppance when I attended a planning meeting, that was a hearing, and the proponent got to stand up and speak. And the very next people that were asked to speak were the neighborhood associations. And everybody else got to speak third. And I was shocked. I'd never seen that before. Neighborhoods have clout. If you want clout in your neighborhood, you get in on your neighborhood and help them do things. And if you want to see streetlights on 45th Avenue, right out here on, next to the school, you go thank these people up here, because in one of our meetings, it was said that they're changing the, you're going to have to help me, what's going on here, sidewalks? Well, whatever it is, there's going to be streetlights out here. There's going to be streetlights on Hayesville, all because somebody came and asked us a question. And so, please, get involved, go ask. Thank you very much. ESNA meets on the first Thursday of each month at the fire station at 300 Corden Road Northeast, and you're welcome to come. We've got plenty for you to do.
Thank you, Michael. I forgot to ask our presenters to stay within two minutes, but Michael, you always get special.
I told you five.
They told you five?
I told you five.
Oh, okay. Well, again, I don't know what I'm supposed to do until somebody tells me, so thank you for telling me.
And if I took seven, I apologize.
All right.
I took the two and the five.
Nicole Tart, our next presentation is Nicole Tartar with the Hayesville Jan Ray Neighborhood Association.
Well, the first one said I had three minutes, and then the agenda came out in two.
You know what? Come on over and take, take your, take your time that you need. This is your meeting.
And I don't know why I'm so nervous, because I'm used to talking to all these people all the time.
Well, there's a microphone over there already, so you can put...
I probably don't need one. I'm like the sheriff, I don't need a meeting, but I know they can hear. So, can you block that out?
Just introduce yourself, and then...
I'm Nicole Tartar.
There you go.
Good to see a lot of my neighbors showed up. Yes, thank you. So, an update and a two-minute timer, this is a challenge. So, I'll say ditto to what Michael said.
I gave you four and a half.
Four and a half minutes.
There you go.
So, um, there was a bit of trouble with getting the paperwork done. There were some issues just going on, so I got held up with that. But, I think we're back on track with Lieutenant Baldridge and Glenn Rader have helped me wiggle through that. People thought I was an expert at this, and little did they know, I've never attended the Neighborhood Association meeting until we started running our own. So, our area, and that's everything too, I need help with the boundaries. So, if somebody wants to send me that info, that'd be great, because I got to fill that in on the paperwork part. So, we meet on the third Thursdays of the month at six o'clock at the People's Church. I think the majority of you here come to my meetings already, so yay, good to see you out again on an extra night for a meeting. Does anybody have any questions for me? I don't really know what to say right now. I was, I was prepared just to say hello, ditto, ditto to what Michael said, and keep it short.
That's good. We can always talk, we can always talk a little bit more during the town hall.
All right, because I can talk a lot, so I'm really patient.
Nicole, thank you. Thanks for your service. Our next presentation is from Jolene Kelly and Lisa. I can never say Trowernick right.
You did.
I know.
It was perfect.
Thank you. And we're going to hear about the census, 2020 census, which is on April 1st. There's another important thing that happens on April 1st, 2022.
It is. Your birthday.
Yeah, it's my birthday.
Yes. Good evening. Thank you, everybody, for coming. I will be very quick. My name is Lisa Trowernick. I work for the Board of Commissioners and am pleased to be here. Thank you for this great turnout. We, the county, is currently convening a complete count committee for the 2020 census. And what that means is we are reaching out to all of our community partners, interested people, any organizations that can help with a grassroots effort to get the word out on the importance of the census, the importance of getting everybody counted, and help people through the process. We're looking for trusted community members who can help people fill out the census. This is the first year that the census will be online, which I think is interesting, because they're asking everybody to do it on April 1st, and it's all online, so I'm not sure how that's going to work. But there is also a paper version of the census. And the, being online is going to be a barrier for some people that don't have access to computers, so we're asking community organizations that may have a computer bank, like a college student center, to maybe open up and have census people here that can help, you know, people facilitate that. Or, community organizations that, that have computer banks where they can have people come in, have an event, and talk about their services, as well as the importance of the census. So, the importance of the census for Marion County, well, for the state, we get a little over $13 billion to the state every year, based on our census numbers. So, if we, we know that our state has grown over the last several years, and in our county, we get $1.1 billion that goes to education, roads, all of our social service programs, early Head Start, Head Start, housing, the Section 8 voucher program, just a whole slew of services. And I would love to talk to you all for a very long time about this, because I'm feeling very passionate about this as we've been working through it. You all have a handout in your packet there. My name and email is on the back, on the bottom. I also have some cards in the bag, and if you're interested at all in being, participating in our complete count committee, if you just want to be on a contact list to know when we're, when we're doing events, please contact me. I also have some business cards in the back. We do have a website. It's mccounts.com. It's on the main Board of Commissioners or the county's website, on the Board of Commissioners page, MC Counts, Marion County Counts, mccounts.com. Go there, all the information that we will be putting out to the community will be there, and we, it is going to be a big ask. There are a lot of people that are concerned about filling out the census this coming year, and we want to make sure that people understand that it is your civic duty, it is safe, it's as safe as a process can be, and it's very important to our community. And I'm happy to answer questions later, if people have.
Yeah, during town, during town hall. Thank you, Lisa. And there's a series of meetings going on for this. We just had one big kickoff at the senior senator last week. Just to tell you how important this is, I'll give you in perspective, the state of California budgeted $90 million to get their count right, and just last week, they passed another $64 million. They're going to spend $150 million in California to get the count right, because of how many billions and billions of dollars it means to them as a state. So, I don't think we've done that as a state, but we're doing everything we can in Marion County with all our staff and our volunteers and, and our neighborhood association meetings, and so, really appreciate anything you can do to help us when that time comes on April 1st, 2020, that we get the count right.
Can I just say one more thing? There's a yellow sheet on the back table. If you are interested in participating, please fill it out, and let me know an area that you're interested in participating, and we'll be in contact.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, Linda, Linda Strike, and you have James with you tonight? There he is. Okay. From our Veteran Services Office, here to talk about what we're doing in Veteran Services. A lot of good things. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Linda Strike, and I'm a program manager with Community Action Agency.
Pull that mic.
And whoops, and we're responsible for operating the Veteran Service Office in Marion County. We have our program administrator in the back there, Chris, and James is our lead Veteran Service Officer, and so, he's going to provide a quick little update. We did leave brochures on the back table for anybody who wants them when we're done.
Hello, everyone. I'm James Riddle, the lead VSO officer for Marion County. We have a new location. It is at 780 Commercial Street, Northeast, Suite 302, and if you grab a brochure, it is on there also. We officially opened this new location May 6th. Our office hours are nine to four, Monday through Fri, Monday through Friday. We do walk-ins Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday from nine to 11, and then one to four. We are in the process of training our second Veteran Service Officer, Tim Boykin. He has gone through his ODVA training and is now in his secondary training in the office. Our third VSO is in the hiring process, very excited about that. And Linda did mention Chris. If you call or come into our office, Chris is the first person you're going to see and talk to, and that is an update on us. So, we'll be here afterwards if you'd like to talk. Thanks.
Thank you for the service and the important work that you do, absolutely, for those that have served us. Yeah, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go from veterans to puppies. Tamara Gesh is here from our, she's our Director of Community Services, and talk a little bit about our dog shelter.
Good evening, Commissioners, and welcome, everybody. I'm glad to have you here. Just wanted to talk a little bit about what we do at the dog shelter. We're one of the only shelters that provides care for all lost and stray dogs in Marion County. So, we have other shelters in our community, but our sole purpose is to make sure that when your dog gets lost, it can get back to you. That doesn't always happen, and that's part of the reason why that is, has been difficult is because licensing. And so, we'd like to talk to not only the Commissioners, but our community about the importance of licensing. It's a minimal cost, but yet it can save hours of time that your animal's in stress, waiting for you to come back and be reunited. And by wearing a simple tag, and that not only helps your community members, your neighbors, your people who come across your dog when it is separated from you, they can call our office, and we can give information, or we can contact them on how to reunite you with your dog. Or, when it gets to our shelter, we have that information readily available. Licensing is also very important for the helping of keeping the spread of rabies from happening in our community. We know that licensing, when a dog is licensed, they have been vaccinated, and we know that we won't have the threat of that being, if they happen to get loose from your care, we know that they won't be at risk of spreading that disease. We do three things, and I was just talking about licensing, and helping to keep the dogs in our care, under quality care, and feeding them, and making sure that they're well taken care of while they're in our, our facility. So, if your dog happens to come into our facility, just know that our floors are warm, we have heated floors, we, we take care of them really well, and, but we would, we, we make sure that they have, you know, things to keep them busy until you're reunited. We also are, we also make sure that when we have dogs that we can't reunite, that we find opportunities for us to get them placed back into the community. And so, that's where adoption, so if you don't have a dog, you're looking for a dog, please consider the shelter for your next pet. They are, they go through all kinds of supports and cares. We also work with volunteers in the community. If you're looking for opportunities to give of your time and talents, consider the shelter, as well as if you are willing to take in a dog for a short period of time, fostering a dog who's under the shelter's care may be an option for you too. I want to just, in the very back row, we have our Shelter Operations Manager, Anne Dorgensen, as well as our Officer, Lindsay Ober, and they're here for your questions, if you have questions about barking, or ordinance, or what we do at the shelter beyond what I've already talked about, how you can be a volunteer, how you can be a foster, how you can adopt. We're here to answer your questions during later portion.
Thank you, Tamara.
You're welcome.
I know, I know two people that were foster people, but now they're actually...
Adopters?
Adopted.
That's how we like it.
That's how it happens.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. We have a couple of presentations left, and the first one is Public Works on our East Salem Lighting District and Capitol Project. So, I believe, Dennis, are you going to, and is there a PowerPoint that goes with this?
Um, yeah, there's going to be a map that actually I'm going to show, but Ryan's going to have a PowerPoint.
Okay. Where will we look to see the map?
Behind you. I think.
You brought a mirror?
Yeah.
Are we in their way?
We, we have it. Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm Dennis Mansfield. I am the Administration Division Manager for Public Works, as well as the East Salem Service District's Secretary and Budget Officer. Here to give an update on our lighting district. Michael Johnson did a great introduction to how these lighting districts formed. One thing that he kind of glossed over is the number of lighting districts that were formed, over 130 of them, up until November of 2018, when the governing body approved an order to basically disband all 130 lighting districts and create one single lighting district that encapsulated all of East Salem. And that map up there that you're seeing, there is the East Salem. It's really kind of two major quadrants or two sections that you're areas. One is the north, what we're calling Hayesville, and the south and the Four Corners. And there's a small middle section there that we're incorporating into the Four Corners section for the lighting district piece. Since the November 2018 approval, we've met with PGE a couple of times to discuss the logistics of making this happen. In your packet as well, you'll have kind of a bit of a timeline, although we're still getting some information from PGE on all the phases that are going to go on. What we do have now is an actual start date of when they're going to start installing On April 9th, just earlier this month, PGE actually installed some lights on existing poles in the Four Corners area on 45th Avenue, just south of State Street. Those poles or those lights were there to make sure that they got the right brightness. Michael Johnson went out and kind of interviewed a few of the neighborhood there and a few of the people there, and came back with the majority of the people liking them. Some people thought it was a little too bright, some thought it wasn't bright enough, but the majority of the people thought it was just right. So with that, the PGE has moved forward with ordering all of the materials. And the project is actually going to start in June of this year, 2019, and it's going to be broken out into four different phases. Phase one is going to add lights on existing poles in the Four Corners area. Phase two will add lights on existing poles in the Hayesville area. Phase three will add poles and lights in the Four Corners area, and then phase four will add poles and lights in the Hayesville area, with the project wrapping up sometime in 2021. So it's about a two-year project. Since the new formation of the lighting district is now all property owners within the ESSD, the property owners will begin seeing lighting assessment fees on their October 2019 tax statement. The estimate for 2019 is $30 per property. As lights get added to the district, costs for lighting services will increase, and it's anticipated that by the time the project is complete, that the annual cost to each property owner will be between $37 and $38 per year. So I'll have, and I'll be here after with the Town Hall if you have any questions.
Thanks. Thank you, Dennis. We were told, what, six months ago, that was going to be a 10-year project?
Yeah.
When we were here, I think. I don't remember, but we want to give kudos to PGE and our staff to really working together to speed that up, and thank you very much. So our next presentation is on Capitol Projects, and Ryan Crowther is here for Public Works, Capitol Projects. Well, I'm not going to steal your thunder. You go ahead and talk about what they are and where we're going.
Thanks for having me. I'm Ryan Crowther. I'm the Capitol Projects Manager from Marion County.
Yeah.
And we have a PowerPoint to go along.
Would you put the microphone a little closer?
Really close to you. We have a PowerPoint to go along with our presentation. So for 2018 construction projects, we have our resurfacing program, where we resurfaced 21.7 miles. 5.9 of those miles were in East Salem. We have our arts transition, also known as our rumble strip project. We also installed thermoplastic striping on Corden Road, and we'll finish with the center line this summer. Our 2018 slurry seal program, we did 3.31 miles of slurry seal, which extends the life of our pavements. For our 2019 projects, we have our sidewalk and sidewalk ramp improvements, which will go in on Hayesville Drive and Silverton Road. We have our curb replacement projects, which will go in in advance of our 2019 slurry application. They are -- include Treeside Drive and 37th Avenue. We have our 45th Avenue urban improvements from Ward Drive to Silverton Road. This construction will include widening 45th Avenue, adding sidewalks on both sides of the road, adding bike lanes on both sides of the road, adding a left turn lane at Fire Protection Way, constructing water quality improvements as well as storm drainage improvements, and upgrading the traffic signal at Silverton Road to accommodate the widening. Since this is such a large project, it will span over two construction seasons. Will start in 2019 and complete in 2020. Lancaster Drive at McClay Road signal replacement will.
Ryan, can I just inter?
Yes.
As Mr. Rader had talked about this, are we going to have lighting done at the same time on 45th?
Not with the Capitol Project. It's not included in the scope of our project. My understanding is that would come.
It's scheduled, though.
Later with Dennis's lighting improvements.
Okay. Is that right? Okay, I see it not. Thank you.
All right. Our Lancaster Drive at McClay Road signal replacement will replace an outdated spanwire signal at that intersection, as well as extending the McClay Road Turn Refuge, essentially adding capacity to the turn lane at that intersection. We also have our traffic signal interconnect project. This is adding fiber optic line that will connect all of our Marion County facilities, including Public Works, the Health Department, the City of Salem Traffic Operations Center, and all of our traffic signals to improve traffic signal operations. We have our 2019 slurry seal project, which includes 2.84 miles of roadway, and as you can see, it's a wide variety of roads in East Salem. We also have our East Salem Service District Stormwater Drainage Improvements. We do a number of these improvements each year. This year, we have Buffalo Drive, which we have a drainage repair at Mary Air Elementary School, or Mary Air, I believe. Eldon Avenue, we are going to replace the culvert under Eldon Avenue. We're going to reshape the drainage channel to increase the capacity, and then we're going to plant vegetation along the banks to protect against erosion after construction. And we also have Draper Street, which we are going to install 475 feet of storm pipe to relieve a flooding issue within this area. And finally, we have projects on the horizon. You can see the list. We've got a number of projects that are coming up in the East Salem area. These range from a bridge replacement on Silverton Road to left turn lanes along Corden Road at Kale, Hayesville, Heron, and Ward, as well as some signal replacements and a number of urban widenings, including Hayesville Drive is probably our largest upcoming project, which will add sidewalks, bike lanes, and storm improvements between Portland Road and Fuhrer Street. And that is all I have.
It's a lot. It's a lot, yeah. So Ryan, I just want to say thank you to you and the Public Works Department and the great work that you've been doing. And if you notice, this is just in this area. Think about Jefferson, well, Little North Fork, North Marion County. There's projects like this going on throughout the whole county. And I know you're really busy, and it's that time of year, that time of year right now where you're out there working hard, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, we're going to have, I believe, Sheriff Jason Myers and Commander Cass are going to talk about the East Salem Public Safety Service District.
Good evening, Your Honorable Chair and Commissioners. To record, my name is Jason Myers. I'm your sheriff. I feel like I have come home tonight. I grew up about three blocks from the college campus here, attended McKay High School. I'm a graduate of Chomekada. I see a lot of friendly faces here in the audience tonight, so it's great to see you all. And we're really excited to give an update on the work that's being done on the East Salem Service District, the law enforcement portion of the Service District. So I'm going to turn it over to Commander Joe Cass, who's going to give the updates on where we're at with that.
Thank you, Sheriff. My name is Joe Cass. I'm the Enforcement Division Commander, the Patrol Commander. So with the East Salem Service District, I've got two lieutenants here. Lieutenant Chris Baldridge is managing that as it moves along, and then Jeff Stutwood is doing our hiring for that. And so the update on that is we have 10 people in the positions. We have one that's working the road. Many of you know Chris Bangs. He's already out in the East Salem District area, so you've met him, you've seen him at the meetings and stuff. We have three at the Police Academy, and then we have six more that are in some portion of training or new employee orientation, right in the beginning of the training piece. So that's the 10 that'll be out there, which puts us in line to get at least five of those, for sure, full-time into the East Salem Service District at the beginning of October. And then over the next few months after that, we'll get the rest, the other five rolled out, depending on how they progress through the training. Additionally, we have the two substations, one here in this building with the security staff, with the security folks for Chomekada, and then the other substation is on State Street at 4444 State Street. Makes it easier to remember that way, behind the church there. We're going to have a substation right there. We're just getting those two outfitted with the equipment that we'll need to do that. The cars and uniforms will be rolled out as we get those decorated up and outfitted with the patches and then the logos and stuff for the East Salem Service District. And the last piece that I want to mention is the statistics that we're going to draw from the East Salem area. They're busy working on getting those borders and boundaries drawn, so that you guys will be able to access that through our website and pull the statistics from the East Salem Service District. It'll be able to do it for the whole county, but it'll be specific to the East Salem Service District as well.
It's that simple. Wow, you guys have been moving fast. So just, this has been a big lift, and I want to thank everybody who's here for their support. And I know we've been talking about this and working through this issue, and you can start to see it happening. And we know that it's worked well in North Marion County, where we added a deputy for that area, and we added a deputy in the canyon and how they become more of a police. It's prevention and getting to know your neighbors, and I'm really excited about what you're doing, so really appreciate it, Commander and Sheriff.
Thank you.
Homecoming.
Yes.
And I'm glad you got the honorable part right, too.
It was hard to say.
We've been practicing that. I have a little plaque that somebody gave you. All right. Okay, that concludes the presentation portion of our agenda, so we're through public comment and presentations. We're going to move to the consent calendar, and I believe you got the really hard one this year or this week.
I like this. We usually battle because they're long and the names are hard, but I think I can handle this one this week. So Chair Cameron, I'd like to make a motion to approve our consent calendar. Under Business Services, we approve the adjusting salary range upward for the Election Board workers and an information technology intern.
I second the motion.
Hey, we have a motion to second. Any further discussion on the consent calendar? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay, that's done. We have one item under action, and it's Health and Human Services. And I believe I see our Health and Human Services Director, Carrie Muller, is here. Is Sydney coming up with you? Okay. And we've got like five people on here. Who's?
Who's missing?
Well, you all want to come up and?
We're all.
You can sing like a choir and introduce yourselves and share a little bit about this. Action item is consider approval of proclamation designating the month of May as Mental Health Awareness Month in Marion County.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Carrie Muller, and I am the Administrator for Marion County Health and Human Services. I'm really excited to be here tonight to introduce this proclamation for the board's consideration. This year is the 70th year for mental health awareness in our country. As we think about the health of our community, the students, and everybody in this community, making space and the opportunity for people to talk about their mental health challenges and health is really, really important. We understand in a way that's very profound and helpful that our mental health is as important to us as our physical health. We want to get to a place in this community and hopefully in this country where we support people at having a positive mental health like we do, like we think about exercise and nutrition, as an example. So today, we're asking for the consideration of that. We've got some really important people here to help us with this presentation. But I did want to say, mental health challenges are very common. One in five adults and one in six children at some point in time in their lives will struggle with a significant mental health challenge. And I think when you realize that and understand that, opening the conversation and an invitation for people to talk about their mental health challenges is really important and something we all can do. And before I share this time with the rest of the panel, I do want to recognize two of our other behavioral health folks in the room. So we've got Carolyn Frye and Tammy Brister, who are also supporting our incredible work at the Health and Human Services Department.
Welcome.
I'm just going to. Swap chairs for a minute.
And you can just pass the mic back.
Hi, I'm Sydney Nestor, and I'm one of two Behavioral Health Division Directors here today to present the proclamation, but I thought maybe we could start with introductions, and then I'll talk a little bit about what we have going on for Mental Health Awareness Month.
Hello, Board and everyone here. My name is Meridi Tudella, and I work for Marion County Health and Human Services as a youth support partner.
Good evening. My name is Megan, and I am here to support my daughter, Madison Trey.
Yeah, thanks for that. I'm Madison Trey, and I'm a graduate of the wraparound program with Marion County.
Welcome. Good to have you.
So they're going to tell you a little bit about their experience in just a moment. But for the month of May, we've planned a few events that we wanted to share with you all to really promote Mental Health Awareness Month. We'll have an article being written by Dick Hughes that will really be focusing on hope and resiliency with the message, much like what Carrie already shared, that individuals with mental health challenges are our neighbors, our friends, our community partners, our family members. And so really, supporting them is like supporting anyone else, like any one of us who face any type of challenge that may exist. We'll be doing a Facebook Live event, date to be determined, that will be focusing on some of our peer support specialists. So the county is really proud to employ a number of individuals who have lived experience with mental health challenges, either having parented or raised a child with needs or who has been an ex, who has experienced mental health challenges himself and been a recipient of service. So some of those folks will be sharing on a Facebook Live event, really, again, the perspective that it's no big deal. It's the life that I lead, it's the challenges that I'm faced with, and my days are just like your days. So really, in an effort to normalize their experience. Finally, on May 30th, we're hosting an Employee Behavioral Health Fair. So we've heard repeatedly from our employees that there's an interest in understanding the really robust services that we provide at Marion County Health and Human Services related to behavioral health. So our own 450 employees aren't always aware of the depth of services that we provide. So we're pretty excited to roll that out with our employees. So that's what we've going on, what we've got going on for the month. Do you have any questions about the proclamation or that before I turn it over?
No, go right ahead. I think we're good.
Okay.
Okay, hello. Check, check. So hello again. My name is Meridi Tudella. I'm just going to be speaking a bit about my mental health journey and why I believe that having a Mental Health Awareness Month for the month of May is important. I think people are more than their diagnosis. I think, just like how Sydney was saying, that everybody's days, you know, even though they're different, that we all kind of go through things, we're just people. So a few years ago, I was struggling with having symptoms of psychosis. I was 21, and I had a pretty bad manic episode and was eventually admitted into Salem Hospital. I was then referred to the Psychiatric Crisis Center, where I was then diagnosed with having Type 2 bipolar disorder and generalized anxiety disorder. When I found out about my diagnosis, my life was forever changed. I finally had answers to why I was acting the way I was. It was the reason why I wasn't sleeping at night, why I was engaging in risky behaviors, and why I was seeing and hearing things that weren't there, and why my moods were so out of sync. I finally had the answers to what was wrong with me, at least that's how I viewed it then. My cycle eventually sank me into my low phase of my disorder. No longer was I full of endless amounts of energy and feeling high off life, but now debilitating depression and anxiety were, was now the new normal for me. It was a struggle to get out of bed in the morning, let alone leave my own house. I wasn't engaging socially with my friends, my family. I wasn't in school at the time, and I was at a cruddy, dead-end job that I hated. I knew one of my goals was to attend Portland State University and to have a better, stable job. job. I knew one of, excuse me, fortunately, after all that struggle, or during all that struggle, I had a lot of support networks around me, such as my family and my friends. So not too shortly after being admitted into PCC, I was then referred into a Marion County program called ESA. ESA stands for Early Assessment Support Alliance. They are a two-year program spread around through nearly every county in the state of Oregon. And what they do is they are focused on providing rapid identification, support, assessment, and treatment for teenagers and young adults who experience the early signs of having psychosis. So after two years of working with my team, my therapist, psychiatrist, skills trainer, and supported employment specialist, I was able to better stabilize. My symptoms were better managed, and along with taking the right medications, I was starting to feel like myself again, if not a better version of myself. It was through ESA that I was able to return to work and go back to school. I was accepted into Portland State University and at the time, working on a graphic design degree. Eventually, ESA also helped me gain employment with Marion County as a youth peer support specialist. So presently, I have been working as a peer support specialist for the county for about a year and a half, almost two years in June, and I just essentially have ESA to thank for it. They, they helped me, they were the people who helped get me back to work, back to school, and back on my feet. So I've learned a lot about who I am as a person and what I'm capable of despite having these mental health challenges. This isn't to say my journey has been perfect. I still struggle every day with how to manage when I'm going through my cycles, and I no longer view of what I have as something being wrong. I've found that by having a mental health diagnosis, that it has given me immense strength, wisdom, and courage that I didn't know I could possess. Living with it has also helped me normalize it, and I no longer fear it anymore. It has also given me a greater life purpose, which is to advocate and instill hope in others who live and go through similar struggles as myself. So to have a Mental Health Awareness Month in Marion County would instill, in my opinion, the very same hope that being in the services gave to me when I was going through what I was going through. And I think it'd make a huge difference in our community and those who need it, so thank you.
Thank you.
So hi, I'm Madison Tritt. I'm a graduate from Marion County's wrap program, and I just want to talk about how much it impacted my life and how it's a really great thing. When I first was getting into wrap program, I didn't want to do it. I didn't know what it was, but I knew I needed the help. My mental health was very low at the time, and I needed something to understand it. Shortly after I started, I met some amazing people who became my wraparound team, who really helped me like understand my mental health and how to handle it and how to advocate for my, advocate for my mental, my health needs. When I first started, I was doing really poorly in school. I was hardly going. I just was at a very low point in my life. By the time I finished, I earned the turnaround award for my entire middle school, for doing the best in my school, basically. In wrap, they typically like tend to build off your strengths and focus on your strengths rather than your weaknesses, which I find very helpful because I feel like most people these days are trying to like just pick out your weaknesses when you really need to focus on your strengths. And it just helped a lot, and yeah, I don't know what else to say after that.
Megan, you want, okay.
Yeah, so I wanted to say a little something as well. Madison is my daughter, and you know, we're here today to also, we want to share our story of hope and resiliency and advocate for mental health awareness. I was raised in a generation where mental health, and I don't even know if it's a generation, I think it just still is, is a topic not spoken of freely. If anything, it's whispered. As a child and early adolescent, I struggled with depression, anxiety, and would get extremely overwhelmed quickly. I also excelled in areas that interested me and could complete tasks at the very last minute. After years of struggling, being extremely self-destructive, and having various diagnoses, I eventually, as a young adult, had a neuropsych evaluation that clearly stated my mental health diagnosis, and so that was a relief at that time. There is so much stigma around mental health to me, and even in getting that my mental health diagnosis, it still felt like a character defect, like I just didn't try hard enough. It was my dirty secret, and I refused treatment for it. Because if I could just be a better person and try hard enough, then I could outgrow my diagnosis, right? When Madison entered kindergarten, I would get phone calls from her school. Madison is so smart, and she's so kind, and she's so helpful, and she's hiding under her desk. This was a common theme through grade school. However, Madison also has chronic physical health issues that are and were very traumatic, so maybe that was the cause. By fifth grade, Maddie was struggling so much that the teacher said she was unable to focus on the rest of her class due to Maddie needing so much one-on-one attention. She asked if I could get Maddie help, and we got Maddie help. And we started her on medication, and she did improve. Once in middle school, Maddie began struggling again. She stopped taking her medication, was being bullied in a very terrible and personal way, and had completely shut down. This is when her therapist referred us to MV wrap through Marion County. I believe that MV wrap saved my daughter's life. Madison is truly one of the most brave, courageous, dynamic, and insightful people I know. She has conquered and won so many battles in her life. MV wrap showed us how to focus on strengths when life was very acutely painful, how to see the positive in her medication, and, sorry, how to see the positive in our, in ourselves. They helped normalize mental health and helped her understand why taking her medication is important. Because of MV wrap, we're able to create change within our family, understand how to support Madison. I think it's sometimes easy to view mental health as a family secret, and so that's kind of how it felt when we started with services, is that it was our secret. And MV wrap helped us break those barriers and helped us identify and access our natural supports. They were able to set Maddie up with a mentor who helped Maddie gain the confidence she needed to advocate for herself and make healthy choices. I feel I would be telling a very different story today if it was not for the MV wrap program. So many times, we look at mental health as a challenging behavior that needs to be controlled, and mental health is something that needs to be addressed out loud, outside of the home, and recognized as incredible characteristics from incredible human beings that bring their own shiny light to this world instead of shame and blame. Because of our experience with wrap, I was able to also address and treat my own mental health. How can I ask Maddie to do something that I would not do for myself? We hold each other accountable now. I never imagined three years ago that I would have the trusting, loving, and honest relationship with my daughter that I have today, and I am so very grateful. We want to thank Marion County, Jessica, who was our wrap facilitator, Leela, who was our family support partner, and the community who knowingly and unknowingly wrapped your arms around us and for not letting us fall and for giving us hope when we felt so desperately lonely. So thank you for everything.
So I think I would just add to that, that I think it was, it's really, sorry, I get emotional easy. I think it's really awesome that you guys credit the program so much, but you guys did the work, so you should take that. Sorry, too sleaze. Anyway, we're done.
Sidney, thank you, thank you so much. Maddie, can I call you Maddie?
Yeah.
When you said focusing on strengths, you know, I really believe this, that we're all created with a number one on our forehead, and it's up to us as, as team members, as a community, to help each other find that, what that strength is, what that number one is, that we've been given to contribute to our family, to our society, to the county, or to this, this group right here. And you just pointed that out, that focusing on that is really what's important, and I want to congratulate all three of you for the steps you've taken and, and the bravery you showed tonight, and just sharing your story with all of us. So I want to say thank you.
I want to echo the Commissioner's comments, and thank you for being here. I think sharing your story is so important to us. I know it's been really important to me. Many of us either suffer with mental illness or have loved ones who have, and a lot of people, all of us really, have challenges in life, whether they're socioeconomic or family challenges. And it's really important for me, and I think for everyone, to understand that mental illness is just a challenge. It's just a level of complexity that some people deal with, and you speaking out openly and being courageous enough to come here really does give people hope. You said you wanted to be an advocate and instill hope in people, and it really does. And so I just, thank you so much for being here. I really appreciate it.
Do I have to say something?
No, you don't have to.
They've done it very nicely. I'm just so tickled. In this job, we don't get a lot of happy stories.
Yeah.
And it's wonderful to get one, and I'm glad, your success, and keep at it.
Thank you, Carrie, and for your team, because this work is really important. It's something that I'm really proud of Marion County for the work that you do.
Yeah, and I think, I don't know who said it, but knowingly or unknowingly, I think it was Maddie's mom that said that, right? Knowing or unknowingly, and we don't even know the work that's going on. All we can do is support, and it goes back to the people in this room. When you hear things like what you've heard tonight, when we, we see our property taxes or whatever that go into supporting programs like this, or our income taxes that come back from the federal government that we talked about earlier tonight, you can see where those dollars are well spent, and how do you put, how do you put a value on somebody's life and, and contribution back to their family and society? It's not something you can do, so I want to say thank you. We are going to...
Thank you.
Make a, yeah, we're gonna make a motion, and we're gonna read the proclamation. If you want to stay there while we do that, that's, that's fine.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve a proclamation designating the month of May as Mental Health Awareness Month in Marion County.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing then, all those in favor of approving the proclamation, say aye.
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 Aye. We will read the proclamation. Commissioner, would you like to start?
In the matter of proclaiming the month of May two thousand and nineteen as Mental Health Awareness Month in Marion County, a proclamation. This matter came before the Marion County Board of Commissioners at its regularly scheduled public meeting on April thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, whereas Marion County is committed to supporting individuals in their recovery and in the belief that recovery is possible, and to assure that individuals with mental health needs have the opportunity to live fulfilling and meaningful lives, and...
Whereas Marion County strives to support the choices of individuals with mental health needs and their families by promoting and providing services that are person-centered, person-directed, flexible, trauma-informed, culturally responsive, and community-inclusive, and whereas Marion County supports the social determinants of health for individuals and families, including housing, food security, employment with special, with mental health needs, and recognizes the focus on social determinants, aids in recovery, and whereas Marion County supports the discovery and development of the unique gifts, talents, and abilities of all, and...
And whereas Marion County seeks to advance social and policy change so that individuals with mental health needs may know that they are not alone, that hope exists and possibility of healing and thriving is real, and whereas Marion County seeks to raise awareness of mental health, to eliminate stigma associated with mental health treatment that exists, and to assist all our citizens to understand the needs and the value of their neighbors and community members with mental health challenges. Therefore, it is hereby proclaimed that the month of May two thousand and nineteen is Mental Health Awareness Month in Marion County, dated at Salem, Oregon, this thirteenth day, thirtieth day of April, two thousand and nineteen.
If I could.
Yes.
I know I said I didn't have anything more to say, but can't help it. We've kind of hit it at the whole system here. We heard about the Psychiatric Crisis Center. We know we have our officers, both city and the sheriff's office have office with, officers with mental health training, and then of course, now you hear the support after. So we have ability to help people in their homes, on the streets, and then at the hospital and, and follow-up. It is a complete system, and I think we need to do more, but it looks like some works. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna sign that, and we'll have a proclamation we can hand to you. Jolene, did you want to, did you want to take a photo? Where's Jolene? Did you want to take a photo with us and them? Okay. And the other thing, Commissioner just was talking, and I got to do a ride-along with, I've done several ride-alongs with our sheriffs, but one day, I was doing a ride-along, and we got a call on Lancaster and Center. It's for a domestic violence issue up in Aurora. If you ever get to go up the freeway in a sheriff's vehicle at a hundred miles an hour, it's, it's pretty scary. But we were the closest vehicle there, and we got there, and, and the deputy, the sergeant, actually defused the situation, and within about thirty minutes, in Aurora, right, which is what, thirty miles north of, you know, twenty-five miles north, up drives a City of Salem police car with a City of Police officer and one of our court teams, one of our mental health specialists. That's a unique program in Marion County. We now have three of those teams. So that person got the services they needed, got plugged in, nobody went to jail, and that family was getting help right immediately. So those are the kinds of unique things that you probably don't even get to hear about, but today is a special day, and we want to make sure that you do. So thank you. We're gonna take that picture, Jolene.
If they want to come up, we can just do it right there.
Stand right here. Right in here? Come on up.
Where do you want me to go?
Yep. Yeah. next week, and then we'll adjourn and go into our town hall.
Okay. All of our meetings are public, and so at the end of every meeting, we announce our meetings for the upcoming week. Tomorrow is Wednesday, May first, and at noon, we're gonna be at our Woodburn Marion County Meeting located at Luis's Taqueria at five-twenty-three Front Street in Woodburn. On Thursday, May second, at seven in the morning, we have a Salem Area Chamber of Commerce Public Policy Meeting located at the Salem Area Chamber of Commerce at one-one-one-zero Commercial Street Northeast in Salem. On Thursday, May second, at five in the evening, we have a Commercial Airlines Service Meeting located at the Salem Airport Terminal at two-nine-nine-zero-twenty-fifth Street Southeast in Salem. On Monday, May sixth, at eight-thirty in the morning, we have Calendar Review located in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor of our building, that's five-five-five Court Street Northeast in Salem. On Monday, May sixth, at nine AM, we have Management Update in the same building, that's five-five-five Court Street Northeast in Salem. On Monday, May sixth, at eleven AM, we have a Board of Commissioners Chief Administrative Officer Meeting located in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor of our building, again, five-five-five Court Street Northeast in Salem. On Monday, May sixth, at one in the afternoon, we have a Marion County Parks Tour located at the Department of Public Works, five-one-five-five Silverton Road Northeast in Salem. On Tuesday, May seventh, at nine in the morning, we have a work session on our permitting process with our Public Works Department. That's located in our building on the Silverton, in the Silverton Conference Room on the fifth floor, five-five-five Court Street Northeast in Salem. On Wednesday, May eighth, at nine in the morning, we have Board Session located in the Senator Hearing Room on the first floor of our building, five-five-five Court Street Northeast in Salem. On Wednesday, May eighth, at noon, we have a SED Core Monthly Business Lunch located at Broadway Commons, thirteen-hundred Broadway Street Northeast in Salem. Then on Wednesday, May eighth, at three in the afternoon, we have a Marion County Housing Initiative Meeting with city officials. That'll be located in the Senator Hearing Room on the first floor of our building, that's five-five-five Court Street Northeast in Salem. Room on the first floor of our building. That's 555 Court Street Northeast in Salem.
And then typically, at the end of our meeting, we sit here and jibber jabber about what we did or didn't do, or what are we doing this weekend with our families. And you can watch that, too, if you want to see it. We're not going to do that tonight.
Oh, add some things this time.
Well, you want to say something? You're going to catch some salmon or steelhead or something?
Wouldn't that be nice?
Yeah, so we will adjourn our official meeting, and we'll open a town hall. And what I'd like to do with the town hall, we'd like to, Lisa, yeah, Lisa's going to have the microphone, so you don't have to walk up here. She'll, if you want to raise your hand.
Make sure it's okay with the TV.
Oh, Trauma, is it okay with the TV?
Okay.
Okay. So just raise your hand if you've got a question, something you would like us to hear about. We may or may not have an answer for you, but one of the things we want to do is hear from you, and then make sure that we follow up and do that. This is kind of a follow-up to what we did about six months ago here. So, and in the room, just so you know who's in the room that can help us from, you met the sheriff and commander of Public Works, our Director of Public Works, Brian Nicholas is here, Matt Canuson, which is Stormwater, Ryan, you saw him on Capitol Projects. Is Russ here, our Parks guy? I didn't see him, but I have him listed here.
Brian is.
Several people are here from, yeah, Brian May, who does, who supervises that area. Our District Attorney, Paige Clarkson, is here. And you met Tamra and Kerry. So we have a lot of people here.
Assessor's here, too.
And, oh yeah, Tom, our assessor is here. So if you want to complain about your taxes.
Yeah, right there. There'll be a special corner back there. You can deal with that.
Right. Anybody else I missed, we'll get to you. So, who wants to start out? Lieutenant, you want to complain about something?
Lieutenant.
No. Lieutenant Baldridge is here with us tonight, too.
All right, Michael. Michael, start us out.
I mentioned earlier that there's going to be that development at the corner of State and Corden. The travel, or the transportation plan that the developer put forth is 315 pages thick, and it captures all the things that are going to go on, on and around those streets, and how they get taken care of. One of the things, though, that was not discussed there, because it may be in the Stormwater Management, so this is for Brian, if you're here, is that there is a stormwater issue on Auburn Road that has been a consternation. The people live in the county, but the problem is going to be in the city when they start building. You know which one I'm talking about? Yes, can you address it?
So the development that's occurring at that property, it's actually in the City of Salem. So City of Salem, sorry, I'll introduce myself. Brian Nicholas, I'm the Marion County Public Works Director. I'll come up here so folks can see me, too. Sorry. The development that's proposed to occur is located in the City of Salem. So the City of Salem has primary responsibility for permitting. When it comes to county jurisdictions, stormwater and traffic impacts are a primary concern. So the applicant, the developer, has submitted his initial permit applications to the city. City has done their review, and we have, now we are in the middle of our review of that analysis. What I can say is, we have questions. We'll be providing feedback to the developer and their engineering team. So I don't have a specific answer to the drainage question on Auburn. I don't know exactly how that's going to shake out. There's, yes, there's a drainage issue on Auburn Road. The connection of this development to that, we're studying that. So I don't have an answer for you right now. It's still, we just got the engineering analysis, so we're doing our review. So I don't have an answer on that. There will be impacts. I mean, if this development goes through, there would be impacts on the street infrastructure. So typically, there's a partnering kind of relationship. Developers, they install some of the street improvements in the county. Typically, we'll partner with them to get the remainder of the street improvements that need to be done to support the development. So we've received those applications and analyses as well, and we're doing that review right now. So I don't have a specific answer how anything on the street network will shake out, but it would add traffic to Corden Road and State Street, and the development and the county combined will have to deal with that.
Brian, you want to talk about our long-term plan for State Street on the county side that we went through? We went through that two weeks ago at our update with you.
Yes. So fortunately, there's some funding vehicles that we have access to, and that's some federal grants. And that's most of the urban infrastructure improvements you've been seeing in East Salem over the last few years, those are typically federal grants, or at least we've been using federal grants up to this point. The improvement that you're going to see on 45th Avenue starting construction this summer, that's a federal grant as well. So we have applied for grants for Center Street and State Street to begin to widen that road out to provide bike lanes and pedestrian facilities and a center turn lane, not only to improve traffic flow on the streets, but to improve safety. So there's a center refuge for vehicles to go in. So that is a need that is well-known, and we're working on getting the funds in place so that we can do that. We have the first grant to begin that process on Center Street. We've applied for the same grant for State Street. We're waiting to hear later this year if we get that grant. But the idea is to begin at the Lancaster end and march our way towards Corden in segments to make those improvements. So you'll see those coming in the next few years.
Right, thank you. The other thing I want to say, we've talked about, I know Commissioner has really stressed this, is trying to keep Corden as a thoroughfare, and so not having ingress and egress on Corden Road is really important to keep the traffic moving north and south.
That's right. Ultimately, Corden Road is likely to be two lanes in each direction. In some places, like between Auburn and State Street, where there are driveways, including a fire station, there are some existing driveways that we'll need to accommodate. So there, the road would probably have a center turn lane there for safety. But that would be the long-term vision for Corden Road, to get those, any property that needs a driveway would be on a side street, not on Corden Road. That way, Corden Road continues to function, serve its current function of a well-functioning through route.
Commissioner?
Well, if I could, Brian, you know, and for everybody's sake here, we worked for a long time. It's been a number one, a top project, both the city and the county, but it's been talked about for 15 years. Nothing's happening. It's an interchange down to 22 that would be so helpful to especially that area. But it's more a personal thing. I just noted, I'll show you how you complained to Public Works, and then things happen. So I was driving Corden Road. Don't generally drive it at about 5:30. And it took about four cycles to get through State Street, and then I got by, and there's nothing going on. Is that a timing issue, or is there something else going on? Or would you just put that on your list to look at? You see how you do that?
Well, a little bit of it is timing, and the amount of traffic that goes to that intersection that then peels off and goes on to State Street. Ryan mentioned earlier, we have something called a Signal Interconnect Project that starts construction this year. City of Salem has a pretty neat system in place. It's an urban traffic control center. So if you go down to Public Works, City of Salem Public Works, there is a room set up where you can, you know those cameras that you see that actuate the signals? City of Salem actually has a command center where you can look through those cameras, and you can see how each of the signals are functioning. So you can move them, you know, switch camera to camera and see how individual cameras are functioning. And a lot of the city signal infrastructure is all connected, and they can actually make changes to timing of the signals and really improve how things are functioning. So in the morning, if traffic is moving predominantly in one direction, they can adjust the signal timing and then observe how it's functioning. And they can lengthen the signal timing in that direction to get more cars through. And then if the reverse is true in the afternoon, they can reverse the timing and give it more time for the traffic to move in the other direction. Most large urban centers have that ability. City of Salem does as well. This interconnect project will connect all of Marion County's signals in East Salem to the very same network. The city actually maintains our signals for us, and they'll have the ability to do the exact same performance improvements for us.
But is there a little beacon or something we can put in his car so it just changes to green when he gets there? He's so special.
No, that's legitimate. No, it's slow now. It was 5:30. I mean, it really was too slow. Didn't even move. The whole cycle went, nobody moved. What was that? People live here, must see that. And then everybody must peel off on State, like you say. But I would say the system isn't really working. And when you talk about the impact of the additional traffic that'll be coming off the subdivision, if it's bad now, I'm just asking you to take an even harder look at it.
Yes, we're actually working out what our plan is going to be. The development is really going to push us to move towards five lanes on Corden and additional lanes on State Street to accommodate that traffic.
Great.
All right. Other issues? And then we'll come back up here next.
You missed the first one.
Yeah.
All right, you mentioned that Corden eventually will go to four lanes, two on each way.
Brian, your back up, if you would.
We have all these houses over here on Kale. We've had all that going down on Kubler, Amazon, and the apartments, and now this new complex. How soon is Corden going to go that far? I mean, sometimes it seems like it's hindsight rather than foresight with all the traffic. I mean, I travel Corden a lot, because I don't like Lancaster. And it's really gotten considerably a lot more traffic in the last two years. So what's happening to Corden? When? When? When?
I don't have a timeline for you on when Corden actually physically gets wider. However, I'll give you a little insight into where we have resources to do with this. So there is actually something called a municipal planning organization, an MPO. That's another feature that a lot of urban areas have. If you've heard of Metro in Portland, that's an MPO. City of Salem or the Salem area, we actually have our own MPO. And there are funds that go to that organization for putting regionally significant projects together, like Corden Road. So Corden Road serves a regionally significant function. Traffic, not only does it serve the neighborhoods, but traffic comes from the north, gets onto Corden Road, gets through, and heads on to the south.
Right.
So it has, and same thing in reverse, going to the north. So we have an MPO, and this is one of the prime projects for the MPO, is to plan out a phased program to widen Corden Road to make it function as safely as possible. So what you will see in the coming years, what I can say is what you'll see in the coming years are phased projects where we make incremental improvements. So Ryan had mentioned that there are four turn pockets coming. So first and foremost, the best thing we can do on Corden Road for safety and efficiency is get turn pockets so traffic can keep flowing while cars are trying to turn off of Corden Road, right? Two of those are already funded by our MPO. The other two, we've put county funds towards. So we're working towards getting those installed. Takes, on average, about two to three years to make those projects, and we're just starting them right now. So in about two or three years, you'll start to see those get built. And then you'll see, on the heels of those, about every couple of years, you'll see another project where we'll take a segment of Corden Road and we'll add some capacity to it. So we're actually developing our Transportation System Plan Update. It's about 12 years old. So if you feel like it hasn't gotten the attention it deserves, you're right, it hasn't gotten the attention it deserves. So we're going through that planning update process. So in about a year's time, I'm hoping to have a lot more clarity on what the timing of those improvements look like. Sorry, I don't have a more specific answer for you.
We had a question over here, and then Mr. Ray will come in.
Hi, I'm Jerry Kimball. I live on 45th Avenue, out just by Satter Drive there. Lived there for 45 years. And you're finally improving the street there, which I appreciate, but I've been trying for all these years to get the traffic to slow down. And I thank the Marion County sheriffs. They come by and they, you know, enforce it once in a while, and it slows down, and they radar people. But when you're doing all this construction anyway, you can make it 25 all the way through?
Unfortunately, we don't have statutory oversight on speed zones.
But I get that answer all the time, you know? You pass it on to the state and...
Well, in this case, it's true. Although, ODOT is going through an update of their speed zoning methodology, and the county engineers throughout the state are contributing to that process. So there is an update. It could give us the ability to say, this road is an urban road. It serves a certain function, and we can just post a designated speed for that road. So that ability may be coming. There's another tool that we're developing. I've asked our traffic signal group, you know the speed zones, the speed signs that give you speed feedback, right? You see those more and more in cities. Marion County hasn't, we haven't adopted a standard that lets us use those in any kind of systematic way. I've asked our traffic section to develop that standard so we can implement that tool. So there's a little bit of work we need to do, so we're prepared to roll out that kind of a feature. So that's something we're hoping to add. One thing you will see on the pedestrian crossings on 45th, we're doing a pilot program where we're putting rapid flashing beacons at the pedestrian crossing, so that should significantly improve crossing safety. This will be the first time Marion County has done something like that. So it'll be our first pilot project. We'll see how it works, see what kind of issues develop. It's kind of funny, when you roll out a traffic system, something new, you got to try it. And you got to, you'll be surprised what kind of issues come out that you never counted on. So this is going to be our pilot program. We'll see how it works, and we'll be reaching out to residents to see, to get feedback on what they're observing, so.
There's a lot of traffic goes there, you know, 7,000 cars a day now. When I first moved there, I was out in the country here. They have four manufactured buildings here for Shamakama. And it's, you know, now we've got 30-some thousand people in this area. Anything you can do, I'd appreciate it.
I hear you, yes.
And I think you just brought up a good point. If we incorporated this area of Marion County, it would be the second or third largest city in the county.
Good evening.
Mr. Ray.
Mr. Commissioners, thank you very much for holding the meeting out here tonight. I think you can see we have a lot of residents in this area that are concerned. I'm sorry, I lost my voice about two weeks ago, and I'm just starting to get it back. I came to the county commissioners quite a while back about Brown Road. You did a wonderful job of putting together Brown Road, but you don't have any lighting. Now I heard tonight, and one of the things I was told a month ago was, they are going to put lighting as they complete the project here between Ward Drive and Silverton Road. Tonight, they said they are not. Why, when we do a brand-new project, do we not include that?
We might as well just have Brian do this week, so that...
This is the Public Works Town Hall. Pay attention.
We hear you. Answer that. I thought the same thing. Oh, then Dennis should have to suffer.
This one, I've got the answer for you. So because the 45th project we are building is a federal aid project, we're using federal funds. It's a project by itself. We've already told PG in your rollout plan, we're going to tell you when we want you to install lighting on 45th. So it will go in as a part of the project. It'll appear that it goes in as part of the project, because that's how the timing will work. From a resident's standpoint, that's how it will look. Technically, it's not part of our project, but it'll go in concurrent with the road improvements, so, yep.
Yeah, just stick around.
Did your voice get better after hearing that answer?
I was thinking the same thing when I heard that tonight, because I thought, it was a month ago, I think I told you that. I'm going, oops. Good. Who else?
One of our distinguished Shamakama board members.
Ex-Silverton.
Ex-Silverton mayor.
My question regards the project on Silverton Road for the bridge replacement on the Little Pudding. In a previous presentation by the county, and it might have been Ryan, I don't know, I believe there were four options about how they would deal with traffic during the construction project. And I'm wondering if they've come to a final decision on which of those options, and maybe they could share it with us again.
That's good. Ken Hector is who is speaking. And Brian, it's the Public Works Show, so you're up again. And Brian, it's the Public Works Show, so you're up again.
This is a project I started and I turned it over to Ryan, but I'll give you, I'll let you know where we landed. So we worked with city of Silverton representatives to get their input on, just perspective on potential impacts at both ends of the corridor, commuter impacts as well as economic impacts for businesses. So we had a back and forth, including a couple of presentations to the city council to solicit their feedback and here's where we landed. We have basically two fundamental options. We can keep traffic open on Silverton Road and build the new bridges, the new bridge in stages, sort of side by side. One half of the bridge, keeping traffic on the existing bridge. Once that first half is done, we move traffic on to the newly completed portion of the bridge and then build out the rest of the bridge. So that's option number one, that would keep traffic flowing on Silverton, on Silverton Road. There's trade-offs with that option. One, it does keep traffic on Silverton Road, keeps two lanes of traffic moving. Well, first trade-off is if we're worried about traffic safety on Silverton Road right now, let's add a construction zone to it and then see what happens. So safety, roadway safety is one of my concerns. Probably a bigger concern is if you drive that section of the corridor, you'll see houses on both sides of Silverton Road. There's no way to shift traffic far enough side by side without mowing down at least, well, the houses on either one side of Silverton Road or the other. So we would literally be buying people's houses and moving them off their property. That's a big ask. So those are the two, the two biggies and there's a third trade-off with that option and that is, all right, it's the longest construction duration that you can get. A two-stage bridge construction project takes longer than any other construction option. So we, although we'd keep traffic on Silverton Road, it would take longer than any other option. Among the six options that we looked at, the second option that seemed the most feasible was simply closing Silverton Road and moving traffic to Hazel Green and Sunny View. So kind of splitting traffic, it would put more traffic on those routes, but we have two traffic, you know, two routes, two routes that we can sign with detours and then folks that use that corridor, a lot of folks are probably gonna self-direct themselves to their favorite route that wouldn't even include those two routes. So we're expecting a lot of commuter self redirecting in that scenario. So what are the trade-offs? Well, one shuts down Silverton Road. That's a, that's a potential issue for, particularly for commercial activity, right? But there are some positives. It is the shortest duration construction. So we can crunch construction down to the very shortest duration and so there's actually potentially a positive there when it comes to impact to businesses. Folks on the road there understand, okay, if I live on one side of the river, but I work on the other side of the river, whether that's Salem or Silverton, I know I'm gonna have to go around, right? But I'll have some respite from traffic on Silverton Road, that's kind of nice. At the end of the day, we really threw it out to the city of Silverton community and said, give us your feedback and given the choice, you know, no perfect solution here, the resounding response we got back was, if you can keep the construction duration as short as possible, we'll go with closure as long as we can keep that traffic closure out of the, out of the holiday shopping season. So that is where we landed, is our preferred solution. We're actually bidding the project later this year so that we can get an early spring start on construction with the idea of having the work done before we get into the holiday season of 2020, right? So that's where we, that's where we landed. I'm sure there's other questions, right?
Just that, if my memory's correct, wasn't the second solution also more cost effective in terms of total project cost?
Yes, we'll save, we'll save more than a million dollars by closing the road. So, and those are tax dollars. They go back to the funding source that funds these local projects and somebody else will get an option, an opportunity for that funding.
We're also putting temporary signals.
Oh, that's right. And that is a mitigation measure. So Ryan, just, Ryan did me a mitigation measure. Our concern about doing the full closure and detouring traffic on the Hazel Green and, and Sunny View is what about traffic at Hazel Green and Silverton Road? It's all, not Hazel Green, sorry.
Powell Prairie.
Powell Prairie and Silverton Road. It's already bad right now, what happens when we add a bunch of turning movements? We're actually gonna put temporary signals at that intersection. We'll also put a temporary signal at the north end of Corden Road at Hazel Green to help that function better during the detour as well. So it should handle the traffic better than it does right now. Unfortunately, we can't use this funding to put permanent signals in, otherwise we'll do it, but temp, temp signals are the best that we can do.
All right. Question right here.
Have you looked at the impact it's going to have on Larden Road because a lot of the people coming down Silverton Road aren't gonna wanna go to...
You need to use the microphone so everybody can hear it.
Oh, I'm sorry. The question is about Larden Road because people coming down Silverton Road aren't gonna wanna go to Hazel Green and Sunny View and Larden is just a perfect little cutoff there and, okay, I'm on Larden Road and I worry about the traffic and the speed that is already very high. Houses on both sides of the road, for most of the road.
Yep. We are going to sign the detours before people even get to that intersection, so hopefully anybody that's not familiar, we'll get them off onto the detours before they ever get to Larden Road. So that's, that'll be our mitigation measure there. So hopefully we'll limit the additional traffic on Larden to just those folks that are familiar with the area and they're doing their self-detour.
We just want one of those little flashy, the speed limit is 55, your speed is 85.
Yes, that's a good tool. And we routinely work with the sheriff's office when we have construction zones or other speed zone issues where we feel like we need to step up enforcement, we'll coordinate that with the sheriff's office.
Thank you.
And I think that's a good point because by the time that construction happens, we'll also have all those other deputies in the area that will be able to help, so...
Ryan, I've got one little concern I could just tell you in private, but I, just to do something different, I drove home on Sunny View, I live in Sublimity about a week ago and it's a very lovely drive, I might tell you, but a narrow road, no shoulder. I mean, I had to kind of pay attention. I just wonder how it can handle itself, so if you look at what you can do, widen the corners or whatever you can to make that drive better. It's, it's pretty narrow.
We'll do that.
Thank you.
Sunny View. Another, another thing for you. You can tell we have fun.
I didn't think it was fun.
No, I didn't.
You enjoyed it.
All right.
I have another one for you.
Any other topics?
Yes, I have another one because in, when Commissioner Willis was going through the calendar, he named a number of things and I heard the word airline service. And the city of Salem one night had this horrendous thing where for about an hour and a half, everybody that got up wanted to talk about airline service. That was about five months ago. What's coming, what, what, what are you gonna go see when you go out to the airport later, whenever it is, this week or...
Are you going?
I have it down, but I'm not going.
So, uh, let's see, where is that? That?
It's here somewhere. Up here. Thursday, May 2nd, commercial airline service meeting, Salem Airport Terminal.
My calendar stops at Wednesday, I'm not working Thursday. No, I don't know where the Thursday, what does it say? So it's Salem Airport, okay. We get invited to meetings all the time and what happens is our board scheduler might put a FYI on our schedule. In fact, if I looked at my schedule, because it's on my phone, my guess is it says FYI on more than one of our schedules, so she posts it because there's a potential that we may go. I'm not going to that meeting. I don't know if anybody else is.
I'm gonna be going to it.
Yeah.
Bless you.
You're talking about commercial airport service.
Yes.
The city of Salem, the chamber is really driving that and I know I'm on the board of Travel Salem. Travel Salem contributed some dollars, they're trying to raise, they got a big grant recently, they're trying to raise some more money. It's, it's a big dollar item to get commercial air service to Salem and that's what they're trying to do.
When you look at the cost of mileage from here to Portland, the true cost of renting your car is still 55 cents a mile. In fact, it hasn't changed much. So you've got 100 miles of travel at 55 cents, so there's $55 you don't have to spend for your airline ticket. Then there's $10 to $15 a day parking for as long as you're gone that will reduce your ticket here because you're gonna have somebody drop you off. So if you look at the total cost of a flight out of the city of Salem to someplace, even if it's Seattle, you could save money if we have airline service here and promoted enough.
So the airline service they're looking at would be, I've gone to some of these meetings, that's why I'm not going. I mean, it's not that I, I'm not saying I'm against it, I just don't need to go to that meeting.
Took a tour about three months ago, too.
Yeah, yeah, they're looking, it would be a service that would either connect up in Seattle or San Francisco. And if you remember, Delta was here a few years ago, it lasted one year, since they went through all the money that they got, they were gone. It didn't pencil for them. They went to Salt Lake. So this would be a north-south route that would connect up. So you would either spend time, because I go to Portland quite a bit, you either spend time waiting, commuting, or you'll spend time waiting in an airport. It'll be the same distance. The benefits of what you just said could be there, but it'll be limited service is what they're talking about, but if they can get it, more power to them.
I think we've always been supportive. We've directed money from economic development for concourse upgrade and work to help extend the runway, the last time we're asked. I'm sure we'll be supportive again if something really can come here.
We're just not gonna use economic development dollars for marketing. We have to buy something with it, do something with it. Good one, that's, okay, nobody wants to talk about puppies?
Yeah, nobody got after the sheriff either, what's that?
Yeah.
You just say you're a local guy and nobody gets after you. There we go.
Who's the boxer dad here?
My name's Skip Kais and we, we talk about spending taxpayer dollars and it really amazes me when I see all of the people in the room shopping at Walmart, even, even the union stores like Safeway, Fred Meyer, they're attacking their wages right now and people are glad to go into Lowe's, Safeway, and they're adding more and more checkout stands that you use to yourself, you don't have an employee. That machine doesn't pay taxes, yet every store in town, more and more, you check yourself Everybody that has to double up in houses in our neighborhood now, restaurants that pay their staff and stuff, minimum wage just went up and everybody says, oh, it's so bad for business. Well, the next thing on, on the agenda in our state is pump your own gas. We can pump our own gas. Count how many jobs that is for somebody struggling. Those are the next homeless people. I just want everybody to think, when you're doing things like that and spending taxpayer dollars, a lot of those taxpayers are gonna be coming for you for more money to live. That's all I had to say. It just seems that nobody addresses where we're spending, getting all this money from. And the people that are not making a living, I worked for Safeway at a time that was the largest store in the world and the benefits were higher middle class. Now they're not there anymore, they've been eroded. I was a meat cutter. The meat cutters today are, they can hardly pass the health class to keep you from getting sick. I'm sorry I'm so down, but it's spending this money in all the things that are needed and...
We don't, and it's just to correct, I just wanna make sure, we're not spending money to help Lowe's remove employees, right?
No, you're spending the money that the taxpayers pay and those taxpayers work at Safeway, Fred Meyer.
So, and just, just I wanna be clear, where the county gets our revenue, right? We don't get it from income taxes. Every working person that pays income taxes, those income taxes go to the feds or go to the state. We do get some of the state money or some of the federal money back into our county, but our general fund dollars, which is what, about 100 million? Our general fund budget now is about 100 million dollars a year, which we spend about 75% on that, 75%. So we spend about 75 million dollars of our general fund on public safety, which is the sheriff, the district attorney's office, the juvenile, our jail. So the, all those dollars come from property taxes. So from the property taxes, and so one of the things that, that obviously is important to us is economic development. More houses grow, more business, so if Lowe's buys a machine, they pay personal property taxes on that which flows into the county. So that does help our revenue when they make investments in technology.
I just want everybody to be aware because I think I hear this from all politicians, that our funding comes from somewhere else. Well, when you get right down to it, I don't think it does and I'm just, I'm just saying everybody should be more cognizant of the people that are working in our areas that would like to buy a house, but now they can't afford it.
Right, we totally...
They would like to, like you say, they buy invested machines and stuff, just like a corporation, it has the rights of a person, they're not a person. So I just wanted everybody to think a little bit because, you know, I've got mine and all my family work for the government now or the big corporations and stuff because they saw what was coming to our communities. I just wanted to say that because right now the retail contract talks are coming and they're bringing in more check stands without people and eliminating jobs and jobs are important to homeowners and stuff.
Totally understand.
I'm gonna get in trouble when I get home, so...
No, you're not in trouble.
Skip's my kinda guy. I don't go to that self-checkout thing, that'll never happen, so I get it.
Well, and I just wanna say, this is something that we talk about a lot actually, is how the middle class is getting squished right now and we talk about it a lot in terms of housing in particular, where the median income around here is about 45 to 50,000 dollars a year, but your median house is selling for about 300,000 dollars, right? And that math just isn't working for a lot of people and that's a big problem, not just for us, but for the whole country because, you know, the ability for a person to get a good job and buy their own home, that's what's built this country and made this country great. And so to the extent that people aren't able to do that anymore, that's a crisis for all of us and we take that very seriously. No, it's fine. We have a, we have our housing initiative that we've been in a series of meetings specifically focused on, on this issue in particular, which is people can't afford a safe place to live and how can that be? How can we have all the ability that we have and the money that we have and the resources we have and yet people can't find a safe place to live? There's gotta be a way through that, so that's what we're working on.
And so, what are some ideas?
Well, the first thing that we're doing is we're not rushing into anything because didn't, we didn't get this problem yesterday and so we're not gonna solve it tomorrow. We're taking our time to try to learn. So what we've done is we started off with our own staff and our own departments and we brought them in and we said, tell us about housing and we learned a lot from them because our sheriff's department and Health and Human Services and some of our other departments, they have people they work with, they have clients that can't find a place to live. So we had our sheriff's department say, hey, some of the folks that we work with, they would be a lot safer and they would participate better in the programs if they had a safe place to live. And our Health and Human Services Department said, hey, we have folks who have developmental disabilities or are getting services for mental health, but they can't actually really do the programs properly if they don't have a safe place to live. So that's one thing we, we learned about and we started working on. And then what we did was we said, we need to go talk to some of the folks that are actually building housing in Marion County. So we talked to some of the nonprofits and some of the developers and we asked them, why is it so hard to build housing? What's, what are some of the barriers? And some of the things that we heard were time, so you know, we had some folks who said, look, if you wanna build housing in Marion County, it might take you two years before you can actually even build something. So we, we were starting to look at, what is, why does it take so long? Is there a way that we can shorten that timeline to build more housing quickly? Another thing we learned was that there are a lot of barriers, you know, like SDCs, so system development charges, it's the way that we pay for our infrastructure. It's important. If you, if you put a whole bunch of new houses somewhere, but you don't have water, sewer, you don't have streets, you don't have lights, you don't have adequate public safety for it, then you can create a real problem. You can have a whole bunch of people without adequate systems, you can have crime that you can't take care of, right? So, but the problem is if your SDCs, if you're asking the developer to pay for all that development, the first person won't pay for all the further development because it turns out that it's most expensive for the first mover. So is there a way that we can kind of make it more equitable so that it's not as hard for somebody to build housing in an area? And Staton was an area, the Staton told us this problem, they actually have 1,000 acres within their urban growth boundary that could be developed, but the barrier is nobody wants to build the infrastructure to actually start developing that land. So we're starting to learn about some of the things that are going on and some of the barriers. We have another meeting coming up with some of the elected officials in the area, so we're just starting the... So we're just starting the process, and, but, but the bottom line is, we've underdeveloped by about 150,000 units in the state of Oregon over the last decade, and it's gonna take us a while to catch back up again.
Yeah, just a statistic that Commissioner just cited. I went to a housing breakout at a business meeting up in Portland. 155,000 units behind in the state of Oregon. It would take building 30,000 units a year, it'll take us 20 years to catch up to that 155,000 behind if we could build 30,000 a year in the state of Oregon. And we were only, we only built last year 23,000 in the state of Oregon. So if you take that down to Marion County, which is what we've been trying to do, is say, "Okay, if we are 10% of that, we're 15,000 units behind, how are we gonna get ahead?" And there's a lot of, there's a lot of issues with it. And I just drove out here tonight and made a wrong turn. I was coming from Kaiser and I ended up going up, there's a development up here north that's going in. I saw all those houses out there, and it's around farmland, right? And so we have a balance. We got, we're feeding the world in Marion County. We're the number one agricultural producer in the state of Oregon. We have to preserve that farmland to feed people, but by doing that, we also drive up the cost of housing, because we're not doing sprawl, right? And so there's a lot of issues that caused us to be here, and I don't wanna go into some of my personal beliefs, but the country is in extreme debt, and why are we in extreme debt? And, you know, the old days, we used to put in infrastructure. I remember as a kid growing up, the cities and everybody put in the infrastructure and then everybody tapped into it. And maybe we, we overdid that. I don't know. So there's a lot of things that could, could be changed, and we're working at it. It's not easy. Land use is a big, big driver of the cost. In Portland, it's $40,000 a lot just for development charges that they're at.
Isn't the urban growth boundary out here? I'd say going east, isn't that Corden Road?
Yes, pretty much.
Is there any chance of folks wanting to extend that out? Because that's all farmlands, too. That's, I've lived in this area for 20 years, and I am concerned about it, the sucking up more of the farmlands-
Yeah.
-to accommodate housing.
I don't see, I don't see that happening while I'm still breathing.
Oh, good.
Right? I mean, I, it will at some point in time, but, you know, the whole Senate Bill 100, which was what, 1972 or '73?
A little later.
Whenever it was in the 70, 70, what'd you say, Michael? 73 Senate Bill 100, the whole idea was that, was not to allow cities to, you know, just jump out. It wasn't, it wasn't to stop growth, it was to, it was to have growth go like this. But what it's turned into be is, it took us 15 years to expand the urban growth boundary in Woodburn. 15 years. That, and how much money that they spend being sued over and over again. So our system is not easy to find land to grow.
You know, that bill came through, and I was a mayor, I think Sublimity may have been, in my memory, we're the first city to have a comprehensive plan approved. And they made a big deal of telling us the whole idea, two things. One, you make a community in your vision, how you want it to be. And number two, that the, the growth would expand out at an orderly deal, just using as what you want and not reach out and grab. Well, that all made good sense. Well, that ones off the subject, but 10 years later, when it's time for a comprehensive plan review or update, it isn't any more about what you want your community to look like, it's what they want their community, your community to look like, and they even have their own law system to enforce their views. So that really troubles me. But number two, on this growing out, no. They don't ever, we've been, we've had fights in Donald, we've had fights in Woodburn. They don't let, oh, we get a little bit Jervis have a, what was it, one lot? That was a big deal. They let us add one lot to the Jervis city limits. Because now these people in charge, they don't want you to grow out at all. They want you to get more dense and go higher. And we fought it in Sublimity. We have bigger lots than they like. That's what open space is supposed to look like, but unfortunately, they're working at it. So my whole point in saying this is, they're a horrible organization. You can't get out of them, you can't vote on them, and they dictate how we live, and I struggle with it.
That's LCDC is who he's referring to. We have had some success, though, and you referred to Donald. We got Donald's urban growth boundary expanded.
But you weren't here when we tried to do it about five years earlier and got shut down.
I know, that's because I'm here, we got it done.
Now, now we get things done. Why weren't you, why didn't you come earlier?
Taking credit for it.
All right.
Yeah, and they're gonna put some housing units in there, and there's some, some good industrial property going in the city of Donald. If you haven't gone up there, the Donald Cafe is a good place to have breakfast. Yeah. Anything else? We're about five minutes.
If you wait for the microphones, right behind you.
Sure. Can you explain Senate Bill 451? You did put a letter out. That is the one about the burning plant up in Brooks. I don't know what it's called.
You want me to explain?
Well, explain what your position is. Give a little bit of grassroots explanations. I don't understand these, the certificates that they're trying to buy, or, I mean, what's happening here?
You sound like you're pretty educated on 451. You know the Senate bill, you know what it is. So basically, let me go back a little bit. Okay, everybody knows that we have one of the best solid waste programs in the state of Oregon, if not in the country.
Yes.
And if you look at the three, the three Rs is, first is to reduce, the second is to reuse, and the third one is to recycle, and then what's left goes into that facility, and it generates enough power to power 9,000 homes. The city of Woodburn could be powered by that particular plant. Everything that comes out of that plant is, other than the smoke stack that comes out, is used. Even the ash now goes down to Coffin Butte, and they use it for daily cover instead of dirt. It's an efficient system. What Senate Bill 451 is, is we had the coal-to-clean bill back in 2015, and we got that power designated as renewable power.
At the burner.
At the burner, because it's renewable. We're using your, whatever you don't recycle and reuse, we're burn it and turn it into power. Instead of putting it in a landfill, which we would have to do to take away farm ground here in Marion County, which is absolutely insane, we don't wanna do that. So when they went to register those energy credits for renewable energy, Department of Energy said, "No, you didn't have this quite right. You need to get this language back in a bill." So we go back and get Senate Bill 451 with Covanta to get those credits correct. It's about a $6 to $8 million difference in the whole program. If that bill doesn't pass, and those, that energy that's coming out of there is not considered renewable, it'll cost us $6 to $8 million, and the gentleman right here knows who's gonna pay for that.
Or-
All of us sitting in this room.
Or we have bad alternatives.
Or we shut the plant down and we shove 27 semi, these are big semi trucks, 27 semi trucks-
53.
-up I-5, downtown Portland, out to Arlington, 98, 9,800 round-trip trucks a year out the scenic gorge to a landfill in Arlington. That's the alternative. And the people that are against this bill are gonna try to shut this plant down and force us to do that. So you ask me where I'm at, you know where I'm at. I'm supportive of all of you to try to keep the best, and what's happened is that they can measure everything that comes out of that. We can measure everything that comes out of that, and we're under all the limits that DEQ sets, everything.
By a long ways, less than 10% of the permitted emissions.
Yeah. And the challenge is, is they cannot measure what comes out of a landfill. And it's not just Senate Bill 451. You got 2020, which is the, the carbon-
Tax and swindle.
Whatever it is. 2020's coming. Now, landfills are gonna get exempt from that, because they can't measure, they can't measure the methane that's coming out of a landfill. You can't measure what's coming out of that landfill down at Coffin Butte or Arlington. So they get exempt because they can't measure their exemptions or what's going into the water. Europe does this technology. All of Europe does what we do here. I don't get it. I don't get it why people from downtown Portland wanna shut us down and have garbage trucks shoved up their, excuse me-
Freeways.
I-5. All right, you know where I'm at.
And we're all at.
And it's a good point on the carbon, that, you know, most of what's emitted from the burner plant is carbon dioxide. That's, that's the majority of the emissions. And so the alternative is not no emissions of carbon dioxide. If we're sending 27 trucks up I-5-
A day.
A day. 365 days. And out to eastern Oregon, those trucks are emitting a ton of carbon dioxide as well. So, so one way or another, getting rid of garbage is gonna result in the emission of carbon dioxide. The question is, are we, are we gonna generate power from it? Is it gonna be renewable? Or are we just gonna waste it driving trucks up I-5 and stick it in the ground?
So right now, the bill, I know all about this, because I've been in the Capitol lot trying to get this done. The bill is in Rules, Senate Rules Committee, and we have, we have enough votes to pass it. We're working on one more vote. The Senate, I'm not gonna go into the details, but we need one more person that says, "Yes, I'm gonna vote for that bill." Then we'll get it to the House, and we'll have a big struggle in the House. But if you want, you can, and we don't have this available on our public website, but Commissioner and I both sent out on our personal emails, and if you wanted to go to my, my website, it's kevincameronfororegon.com, all spelled out. I just sent out a newsletter. You can click on that, and it'll give you information about that particular bill and what you can do to send letters to state representatives, et cetera, to try to help get that bill done. It's, it's a Marion County issue that's really, really important to us as citizens.
To all of us.
Yeah, to all of us.